Okay, folks, we're gonna get started here on our six thirty board trustee March twenty ninth work session meeting. This is about the water treatment plant ninety percent, they're closing in on it. Uh but before we get started, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes.
All right.
I just wanted to apologize to the board and trustee Kenny for um my conflict of interest question. I apologize that I came across the wrong way. I was not in any way meant to um imply any um bad behavior on on your part, trustee Kenny, and so I apologize for the way it came across into the board and and to the audience that was here. Um, I had the wrong understanding of conflict of interest, and thank you Dan Cepianza for explaining what it meant, and it was not what I thought it was, and so my question uh was in no ways um implying anything back, so I just wanted to apologize in public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we can get started. So I'll get started here. Thanks, everybody, for coming to this special meeting to talk about the water treatment plant. A month ago, we were talking about the wastewater plant. Now we're talking about the water plant. Pretty much the same thing. We want to have a work session to introduce the numbers to you guys tonight, so we have some time to to think about it. Uh we are planning on bringing this for the board on April twelve for for approval, just like we did for the wastewater plant. Um I'm gonna tip throw through the uh agenda item summary that's in your board package, and then we're gonna open up for questions. I want to introduce introduce a few people. You all know DJ. Uh Will Martin from Hansel Phelps is here, Preston Randall, um you know, Bob, uh who else? Freddie Ballad is from Hansel Phelps is back there to answer questions, Nathan Ewer, and y'all know Megan. So we got the full team here except Jacobs. Um Jacobs couldn't be here tonight, but if there's any questions that come up from the engineer, I'll certainly pass it on to Richard Saxon and their team. So a- again, this is for the ninety percent cost from the uh for the wastewater plant that was submitted by Hansel Phelps uh about a week ago. That initial number came in at thirty-two point seven million dollars. That includes a five percent contingency, a contractor contingency. Uh a lot of this is in flux right now. As I as I wrote, you know, during the next several days, a town will be reviewing these these packages, looking at the VE items that Hansel Phelps suggested, working with our contractor. I'm sorry, our engineer on that to make sure that they're okay with some of these items. Some of those might need to decline, some of those will accept. So there's a potential of about four hundred forty thousand dollars if we were to accept all those. Uh but again, we have to properly vet all of those VE items.
To add to that, just
Yeah.
So so we got this at the end of the day last Wednesday, so there's still a lot of work for us to do before we bring it to you for approval. Um but we've already made quite a bit of progress and so um but there's still some questions in here we have and
Um, so a couple of things, uh substantial completion and final completion dates were identified in the package as May sixth, twenty twenty-four and July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, which constitutes a twenty-four month schedule like we originally envisioned uh a few years ago. Um, they did use a competitive bidding process, just like they used or most used for the wastewater plant. Um where they've got at least three bids in from most of the vendors, most of the subcontractors, and we're we're flushing those out right now. Uh as Bob said, we've got more work to do on that, more decisions to be made within the next few days, right? Um, little background information, if you remember back in January, the board approved the ozone uh purchase. Um, that was one point six million dollars. That includes the contractor markups and fees, and that also includes some work that they're going through right now to prepare this guaranteed maximum price, so that one point six is still out there, been approved. Um. One thing on the um on on the difference between the sixty and ninety percent cost, it kind of depends on how you look at the numbers, whether you approve contingencies and markups or not. But roughly, and if you include the ozone, roughly, we're looking at about a three point seven million dollar increase from the sixty percent cost, and a lot of those are attributed to the same reasons that we had an increase in the wastewater plant, supply chain issues. Um, some of the subcontractor suppliers were very nervous about holding prices more than sixty days. In fact, some of them weren't even comfortable doing that, and Hansel Phelps can speak to that in a moment. Electrical prices have gone high. Davis Bacon, American Iron and Steel also affected the prices uh which have changed sixty to sixty percent. Okay, uh moving forward, uh we, like I mentioned, we want to bring approval um to the board on the twelfth for this with revised GMP number after we've worked through everything. Um and then and that that way Hansel Phelps can lock into prices after, you know, pending board approval. Um, as far as Jacobs, Jacobs is kind of on hold right now. Um they're gonna pick up their their hundred percent design effort. Um, after we approve this contract, and they'll have that hundred percent set ready uh May twentieth. So that's all on my other schedule. So one thing on the cost estimate, since we received the first one last Thursday, um, we looked through those and have a revision to hand out to you right now. Um, a little bit less than the one that's in your package. We just we just went through this, and we got this yesterday from Hansel Phelps. Um, so the new price, uh when including a five percent agency contingency went down from thirty-two seven to thirty-two, three, and then that's in the handout that DJ Scotty already now. So we'll still be working through that package again, like like Bob says, and and refining that number. So that's really all I wanted to talk about and want to open up for the questions from we've got the team here. We should be able to answer most of the questions you have.
We'd say we got, uh we get um comments from trustee Gator. Good job. I had a meeting yesterday and um British comments from trustee Whitehouse, and we have addressed those as we could in the in the time that we had. Um, but I we could go through those questions as well. I did have one first question. That's unclear. So the one point six or the ozone, is that part of the it's part of the overall price, but is it actually included in this doc, this this document? No. Okay. That's all I wanted. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
What was the ozone cost again?
What's it?
One point six. The actual equipment was like one point three, and then when you tack on the contingent, uh the owner's um profit and overhead, it comes up. Okay, well, um. You guys did diligence. Questions and first, wanna go over any of those?
Yeah.
Why don't you do that? You did that. So you tell me, you guys can share both back and forth and enlighten the rest of us.
It's almost money.
And and I've looked at this some since then, and I've actually got a conversation with uh Mr. Gallo, and I could kind of understand it a little bit better, but uh you know, uh let's see, on page eight of our packet, it goes under item schedule C, exhibit C. So at some point, it says Lurmer County Septic Permit and Stormwater Permits are included. All other permit costs are not included responsibly on. Do we have any general sense of what, or can we at some point get a general sense of what might not be part of that? Um, we we do have a general sense of that, but Nathan's so real quickly, um the entitlement in the building permits through both being handled by the town. Part of our state contract allows us to get our projects reviewed for free, so there's no building permit costs. Um, we, the county also delegated the site entitlement to us, and we're pleased there as well, so. Um, the one remaining fee that we're kind of aware of is the uh the building permit fee from Wellington Fire, which they can talk.
So Wellington Fire, I mean, they've got thirteen page list of fees on their website, and generally what what we're looking at is we provide an evaluation of each of each building, and it's not the equipment inside the building, it's the actual structure itself. And so, for instance, you know, if I'm using their formula and the building say five hundred thousand, they're sorry, HP, there wasn't like a line item in their quote, it looks like in the safe building itself. But if the building is five hundred thousand, using their four hundred points, six, you're looking at a three thousand. Then you've got uh say sprinkler inspection fee, two hundred and sixty dollars, the ceiling, the shrinker head, you got you got fire pump on site. Sprinkler system, so that's another five hundred dollar inspection fee. There's going to be fire hydrant on site, so it's a two hundred and sixty dollar inspection fee. So there's there's little incremental, it's not um, you know, with three actual buildings, we're anticipating probably somewhere between twelve with fifteen thousand dollar range total. There's some other sort of temporary construction thing that ensure HP is aware of, such as the fuels that are that they're gonna have that permit.
Everett would prepare those fees, and these are already looking plans a couple of times along with our heavy machinery. They have few questions, our engineers are working the answers to those questions now. So we'll know more about about that. Okay, that's great, because you quantify it. It's not like, oh, it's seventy-five thousand dollars for something from the county, or it's it seems pretty small compared to some of the numbers. Okay. Um, page nine, is fire suppression needed in the ozone building? It was unclear. That seems like the documentation didn't indicate it, but I don't know if it is it.
You know, we don't believe so, but it's something we need to talk to Jacob about. There was one note in the ozone drawings that noted fire suppression has been required in the ozone building, but we're assuming that it was just a carryover from the from the chemical building. So that had not been talked about in any phase of of the design, so we don't believe it's included. We just want to clarify.
Yeah, the whole team doesn't believe it's included in physical talk or whatever. Obviously.
I saw a question on the fire fees. We're talking about that. Are we considering running up through the fee waiver agreement that we have put together with the fire district about mutually waiving of fees? Is that something we're considering utilizing that agreement?
Honestly, don't remember if that got adopted or.
Yeah.
It did get adopted.
Up to five thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
So we've already, CAC has already requested four hundred dollars of that for their events, but.
If we could just, as staff, you guys can decide whether it's appropriate or not, if we just keep that in mind, if we're gonna have that.
Try to use, I think we vote for that.
If we're gonna use any project, a project of a water fund would be great.
Apparently, we might have four to six hundred dollars of credit there. Yeah, dragging that down.
That was my only question on that.
Okay, I mean, I just had a comment about the cost of the stainless steel pipe, but now I find out that stainless steel pipe is three alloy three sixteen, and it's thirty-six feet and I am thirty-six inches in diameter. I was like, oh, it's not like a little pipe. It's it's for the ozone, so that's, I think that question's gonna ask, but uh some of the things I know that uh it looks like there's some pretty, it says one instance, and I don't know if this refers to like a there's a twenty-four inch pipe, and it's, it looks like it's coming at the two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for one foot length of pipe. Is that a batch order? Is that like multiples or is it really that expensive?
No, it is. It's multiples, and then the way the estimate was presented, it's not, it's not super clear. So each each one of those pipes that's shown in there, the separate um spool pieces of pipe is part of a separate package. So the backwash supplied pipe, the filter effluent pipe in the building. So when this is rolled out in more detail, you'd see each individual pipe. So those prices, that two thirty-nine is actually for that piping system.
Okay.
Instead of breaking apart each individual piece of pipe, about five million of them on this job. Um, we just find it a lot more efficient just to put that number under one line.
Okay, again, I was shocked. I mean, I'm I'm was quite surprised by the cost of butterfly valves, and I was like darn these things, Chris. I looked, I didn't know what one was, so I looked it up and I go those are really expensive, so. But I know there were big price increases in valves and fittings in two twenty-one, right, like forty-five percent or something.
Big price increases, and those those big dollar valves will have electric actuators on them too, which oftentimes costs as much as the valve does. So that's another big cost with those valves. Um and then, yeah, with the AIS requirement, like Dave said earlier, that causes valves to cost more too, just because they have to be compliant with the American Irons deal.
Uh again, this is, I've looked at a bunch of drawings. Obviously, you folks do this all the time. You know, I'm in construction, but these prices are my cook. Okay. And the only other real question, because I think some of these are somewhat general about you, how you say you group price, and and so it's not a one item that you're paying a quarter million dollars for. And I guess this is more, we got that green loan through uh for wastewater treatment. I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm probably more to staff, I don't think is here, Patty's aware. Is it something that we could do to, you know, have that? I don't know if it's the the horses left the barn, but there was that three million dollar loan that we got through another fund that helped us lower the overall interest interest rate because it had a lower interest rate. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Yeah, so that's uh what you're referring to is um GPR, Green Project Reserve. Um, that's another funding source that the state offers. It's called the direct loan as opposed to a leveraged loan. So it has different requirements and different stipulations when how those are drawn um and how the papers are developed, and also how it's approved. So what we had to do for the wastewater plant was um submit uh what we call the GPR memorandum that lists all of the items that we think are GPR compliant. Energy savings, um everything that would qualify for potential green project reserve funds. We did that, we started that last year. So for the water plant, um I I think, I think we're a little bit too late, and here's why. If we were to start that up today or or earlier this year, it would take some effort to go through and identify all of those items and then get it approved by the state. Uh the state only has those applications twice a year, right? So we'd have to apply for it. Um, it was in January and June, I believe, is are the deadlines for those applications. And then they have to approve it, and then also um the the big thing with that GPR is if we if we go ahead and apply for that, given the time we're at right now, we would be subject to the revisions to Davis Bacon and American Iron and Steel for respect to the Bi-American, Bill American regulatory requirements that are coming up.
I, that makes perfect sense, because, yeah, we we really don't want to get in that area, because I suspect it's gonna be
Yeah, I mean, it's three million dollars at a reduced interest rate, uh potentially, this is what we got for the for the wastewater plant. But, you know, the timing was more conducive for the wastewater plant than the water plant.
Okay, thank you. That's really all the questions. I appreciate, I appreciate you you guys having, and again, didn't have very long to take a look at them, but there's just kind of things that are a little more common than anything else, but that's that pretty much covers everything I've got. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you think when you come back here with this, we're gonna have a further breakdown on the quantities or no? It's your intention to do that. We can show you whatever you need, video footage or something like that, you know, throw something. I don't know what.
The the interior pipe's a little tough, because
Yeah.
There's a large, the large cost items are typically the fitting.
Oh, yeah.
So um especially when you get into the twenty inch and up, so we can show you the the cost breakdown for the each fitting and whatever you need to see to make you feel comfortable, we can provide that.
I don't know how far, tell me, just to see maybe some overall quality or something like that. Hey, so real quick, you're on this thing. Independent QA QC testing firm services be paid for by the owner. You got that covered? Yeah, that's um concrete test, uh metal inspections, that sort of thing. I'm working with um or I will be working with the same firm that did our geotech, geotechnical analysis, that's soil logic based on four Collins. Uh Jacobs is putting in a list of the tests that are required for a water treatment plant, and then I'm gonna get a price from them.
But we got, we got it included or?
It's not included in number in front for you, but it's included in the budget that we put together, the five-year CIP budget that was put for you last fall. It's in, and we haven't, I think we allocated a hundred twenty-five thousand.
That'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Just, oh, all right, all right. Generally, we're the testing or inspection firm, because we want them to be account, fully accountable to us.
Yeah, independent.
Independent, they're they're gonna be like on site failure, when you call them. At different times, it might be getting late, you know.
But I see, and they're not cheap, but I guess you got it, okay. Yeah, and that all depends on the quantities too. They'll do a quantity takeoff on the volume of concrete, estimate how many cylinders they have to, you know, pour and rake and all that sort of thing. Uh the metal testing, uh Jacobs will be giving us that list, and you know, once we get that, I'll work with soil logic and getting the price from them. I'm doing that for the wastewater plant right now with um with CTO.
Okay.
Dave, question?
Yeah, just have a couple. Um, so I know one of the questions that I asked Bob yesterday, um in the kind of the executive summary, you discussed that um the changes, part of the cost is changes in scope and description from the sixty, or scope and specification, I apologize. So could you just kind of address what that's getting at in terms of what was the change that happened from the sixty to ninety in terms of the design, scope and specifications that cost the price to come up on that?
You want to take that over? Um, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, um Preston, you might. Yeah, so we, we were talking mainly, that might have been a poor choice of words, like sculpt change. We didn't change the scope, but we modified, not modified, but advanced the drawings from sixty percent to ninety percent. Um, more detail, which which is common between sixty and ninety, which was reflected in Hansel Phelps's cost estimate. Um, I'm trying to think of some good examples. Numbers of doors, numbers of windows, numbers of uh uh equipment purchases, uh excavations have been um better defined at a ninety percent level, so those sorts of things. We didn't add like any kind of new treatment or something like that.
So so we didn't fundamentally change it. We didn't say, oh, we're adding a new process, or we're doing this new thing. We just kind of dialed it in.
Yeah, like I explained yesterday, it's sixty percent by definition is not final.
Sure.
Right, it's not ninety, it's not a hundred percent, so the contractor has to make some assumptions. Not everything is fully detailed now. And sometimes those assumptions will lead you to come a little bit under, sometimes they'll lead you to come a little over, and that's what happens in this case. You look on pages uh of of the Anthony Phillips quote three and four, they're listing out like pea gravel and the number of cubic yards and wood cost, and that's it. That's a great example. We are buying be changed between sixteen and nine. So some lanes changed, always. Like one of these, depending on these, always. That happens kind of throughout the whole project.
We've got this uh, hopefully, charge equipment schedule here. What's this?
Potential for extras or something like this is what you would use?
This is the pricing that we use to rent our internal equipment, much like going to Wagner or a full river, or any of the clean yard. That's the pricing that we use to come up with our internal pricing of our equipment.
All right.
So that's included as part of the packet, just to be completely transparent.
Yeah.
That's what we use. Um, we go through a process where we go and and check about all of our pricing with the supply yards to make sure that it's most advantageous for an owner to be able to use our equipment on site. Um, so that's, that's why that's included in that packet, because that's the information that was used to create the estimate.
We have it on our list to verify that comparison for the private rental market, and um uh we'll do that before we bring it back.
Right, right. I would assume this is what you're gonna use in case any extras come up, or that part has come up with something like that. This is kind of like this is what they're gonna, this is their unit cost they're gonna bring in.
Well, that's built into the bid right now.
What, in that contingency?
No, in the actual bid numbers.
Well, I know he's got that. This is for over and above. This is for extras.
No, this is showing you the rates.
So let's say they have equipment. If they use the truck on our job, they're gonna, included in the bid is fifteen hundred dollars a month for however many months they're gonna use that truck on our job.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is if he's got a scope change out there, he's gonna bill you another fifteen hundred bucks for another month. He needs it. Is that how it's gonna work?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. This is what we're gonna use to determine that kind of cost.
This almost kind of goes into general conditions. If the project becomes shorter, project becomes timewise. Is that a reasonable way to state that?
Yeah, I would, I would say to make it more clear, Wellington's gonna pay for what's actually used out there. So if we use the four seventy track hoe out there for three months, that's the, that's the rate you're gonna pay for three months. We do have it built into our estimate, but just to make it easy, once we get to a pay request time, and we're sitting down with Jacobs and the town staff to make sure all costs are appropriate and everyone agrees to them, it's just an easy way to double check, hey, the excavator was here, the loader was here for this month.
Until you break down your schedule by, when you send it in for your budget, that's what you're gonna use to do that one.
Yes. All right, so this is a question I brought up in the conversation, my conversation with Bob yesterday. What, and again, I don't know the market and all that, but I was just looking at, and I don't know what is like planned for like a diesel truck or a gas truck. Um, and if that's something that you guys have been using multiple of those entirety of the project, but I know one of the things I brought up to Bob is I know that's something that's been on our CIP. And I mean, if if we are gonna have like a a gas truck that's gonna be used on the job for two years, we're gonna basically spend about twenty-four thousand dollars, and it almost would save, do we purchase CIP early, let Hansel felt use our vehicle for two years and then get that back versus just paying the twenty-four grand? So if staff can just look into that, again, I don't know, and you guys can work out with Hansel Phelps if that is even an option. Um, now, obviously, when we get into greater, we don't need that stuff, but if it's something that's already on our CIP, then just staff, can you look at, does it make sense for us, can work something out where we purchase a piece of equipment, they use it for the project, and then when it's done, we now have that equipment that staff wants anyways.
And and to answer that, we're gonna need to dig into those details.
Sure.
You know, how many hours, days or months that Preston has. I mean, you go ahead and dig into it, but I probably can't, I don't want to do that. They've offered to give us as much detail as we want.
Well, we probably won't want that truck back after they're done with it. I know, I've seen their truck. I know the truck.
Typically, for a job site pickup, I mean, just to touch on that subject, I mean, that's hauling fuel to the equipment and bouncing to the job site and going and picking up a bunker two by four. It's not the easiest work, um, because I wouldn't want to use a brand new pickup to do it.
Okay.
Or open, or open to whatever.
Okay.
It feels bad.
We have some beat up pickup trucks.
What do you think?
I had some questions on some of the details, but they've pretty much explained. They're broke down. It was looking at just some of the big items that I highlighted. But I can't figure, that's how they were, they were lumped together with much other stuff, so.
Ready to pull a ripcord on his things, that where you're at, let's get her going. No, what else?
I probably had the same question.
I guess we're just.
I'm curious to hear about the value engineering stuff. I'm eager for that, but otherwise, everything's looking fantastic, and thank you guys very much.
Some of the value engineering items, it's it's really not a static process, right? It happens throughout the project. Some of those are dependent on the hundred percent design, which is not getting done, you know, when we execute the contract. But the same thing with molds, if you remember, was a running list of the items. We'll know, we may know in three months, we may know in a year, whether or not we're gonna execute that. Reason we have them in there, so we don't want to lose them.
Right.
So tracking all those items as we go.
Lovely.
One thing I'm impressed with is this two-year schedule. It's a pretty important lesson, and you've got it in there. I like it. It's aggressive. You know, I think that's ambitious. I like it.
You can thank Bob and Dave for that, because we didn't have an option. So I know that's been the plan ever since we started this whole process, and that's what we're sticking to. We feel very, very good about it.
Right, two years.
I appreciate having the schedule in our packet. That's the first time, I think, I've actually seen like broken out, here's what's happening. That was really neat to see that, so thank you.
For it, I was ready to go there.
That's, thank you.
Sir, apparently, it was quite a bit more detailed. It's not in that.
This was really good. Um, I knew you guys are still working on value engineering. You know, Bob, you kind of gave me a brief rundown yesterday of kind of where we're at on that. Did we want to do that with the whole board today, or did you guys want to wait till we come back in April, and you've got that more figured out to kind of run through?
We go through them now, you know, so everybody's aware, and the questions about those particular items. And keep in mind, this is just the remaining.
Yeah.
It is on page one of Hansel Phelps, or page twelve of our board.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. You don't have to leave here. Um, so we'll just go through the list, but item, item one one oh one is the ozone contact pipe material substitution. Um, this, we were talking about earlier, but uh in the sixty percent, um, we priced that ozone contact pipe as a carbon steel with a cement mortar lining in it. So that's the, that's the pipe that's coming off of the ozone going to the filters. Um, during this, between sixty and ninety, Jacobs felt more comfortable using a three sixteen stainless steel pipe um in lieu of the carbon steel, just for longevity and and for the longevity of the pipe. And so when we went back to the stainless steel, we added roughly uh three hundred thousand dollars in just pipe cost. Um, but that's something that I know we still want to discuss and and make sure that's in the best interest of the project to continue with the stainless steel. But that's something that I know we still want to discuss and and make sure that's in the best interest of the project to continue with the stainless steel. Um there's some other options that I know Will and Freddie had worked on. Um some A P P E possible options, I would want Jacobs to fully vet, that would save considerable money than going with the stainless steel, so. As long as it's compatible with that ozone water, we don't want a hole in the pipe in three or four years either, so making sure that it's the best interest in project.
That's why there's a to be determined in there versus an actual number, because it could go a number of different directions.
Look, could you just on that, I mean, we we had talked about this part of the meeting, but I mean, what do you think the longevity, the service cycle for the the? Cast pipe with concrete liner as opposed to stainless steel? Any any sense, you could be a real ballpark.
Highly dependent on installation.
Now, there you go.
Any any nick or any damage to the liner is gonna cause that that pipe to fail early, so.
Okay.
You're completely, not only installation, but how the liner was installed by the fabricator too. Those are the two items that. You're just at risk if something was done wrong and have a premature failure, you're gonna have to figure the pipes in.
The cement lined carbon steel pipe also needs to be inspected more often, maybe repair. Ozone system would have to come down for that, for that to happen, so there's some operational kind of issues and get pulled in there as well.
So the stainless steel is a lot, is the less expensive alternative, we're for more expensive. And we're considering going to the carbon steel or we're concerned, I guess I'm confused, just.
Yeah, so right now the stainless steel is in here.
The stainless steel is in this.
Okay, so this is the item that will bring the price down.
Okay.
Potentially looking at other pipe materials.
Got it, okay.
There's a bit of a difference of opinion between the engineer and and. Uh the team here, so we just gotta work through that.
Okay.
And make sure that we're longevity, the performance, the cost variations, benefits. You know.
Item number two is delete the quarter inch amplitude on on the concrete. So each each joint that we're gonna have in the concrete walls or the concrete slab. The specs call for us to go in and actually mechanically um make a quarter inch amplitude on any of those connections where concrete's gonna abut each other. We've seen, we've done it that way, but a lot of engineers don't want to do it that way, that seems to be on the excessive end of a prep for a concrete wall. So in in lieu of doing the quarter inch amplitude, um doing a light sand blast, which is oftentimes an industry standard on those connections instead. Um can save up to two hundred, will save two hundred thousand dollars if that's agreed to, to go that route, but once again, structural engineer is gonna have to be involved to make that call. But we see it both ways, but the the sand blast is something that is an industry standard that we see.
What on the abutting, on the abutting face?
Yeah, so when we go in and strip the bulkhead, because we're only allowed to place walls in thirty foot sections, so when we go in and strip the bulkhead off. And there's a smooth surface there, they just want that roughed up, so.
So you've got some bonding.
So the concrete can adhere together.
Um you're just gonna pull the cream off with sandblasts or that kind of thing.
Yes, to get a profile.
To get a quarter inch amplitude, more or less, you need to have a hammer drill or use a mechanical.
Quarter inch is pretty big profile, huh?
It is. Those are one of the bigger ticket items, uh one point oh three is it to be decided HP control revision. Um this is probably gonna land more on DJ and and the town staff on how intricate they want their HVAC controls to be. Um if it's just want to honeywell the thermostat on the wall, very simple design, there's a chance to save quite a bit of money there, if you want a computerized control system for your HVAC. That's what's included in the bid now, but uh to decide to save some money there, that could be a considerable savings, that's more simple, we make that control of the HVAC system.
Are there multiple zones set up uh currently, is that what the computerized?
Yeah.
So DJ, since obviously you guys are the ones that are gonna be using this, what is the difference gonna be on you guys from a just doing your jobs managing the plant? Having a simple system versus a more advanced system?
It simple system is more hands on, so we'll have to go. Be more inept to the the changes in temperatures. Going and making sure they're properly set and making sure nothing's gone out versus, you know, having it digital, so, I mean. I'm not opposed to either one of them right now, it'll be a staff decision, but I'm not opposed to to walking around or. You know, having a little bit of creature comfort if I could.
Okay, what about energy efficiency over time, is there anything to consider there, going with the digital? Be giving that up, you know?
Possibly, but what we find, and and it'd be good to have Jacobs involved in the conversation, but anytime you have water running through the plant, it's amazing the temperature of the water, how much it actually dictates what the temperature of the building is gonna be. Um so being able to utilize, I don't know if they have models or anything like that, but a lot of times the HVAC systems can be a little extravagant. Once you factor in how that water controls the temperature inside the building.
The cold water will actually bring down ten fifteen degrees from ambient temperature outside just for having it come through the plant, so it is pretty pretty stark.
So you have any electronic monitoring out there, or like controls in that that portion of the treatment plant?
We will, yeah, they'll they'll be in process monitoring and controls throughout throughout the plant. On in multiple buildings as well, too.
I was just curious, I know sometimes that they're particular with I T systems that they're monitored and kept at certain temperatures.
And we can also, and I don't know, have a hybrid situation where the critical infrastructure that needs to be controlled climate wise has. You know, the automated system and the ones that are less frequently used can just go to the to the manual operation, so. I said it would be, it's, it'll be up to the team to to decide which way to to go and which buildings, if any. Deserve, you know, the the automated system or the the manual system.
Thank you.
Well, I have one point oh four, um the finished water pump that we're adding to the the existing structure. Sulzer provided us pricing for that, and they were not on the listed manufacturers, they were approved manufacturers for that um pump application. Um if we decided to go with Sulzer, which is an household name in in water, we can save forty thousand dollars just by changing that pump out to Sulzer Grand Pump. That one's fairly straightforward, but once again, the team got to be okay with it and then got to get Jacobs buy in on that.
Does that affect anything in terms of loans, what does that mean when they're not a?
What is where do you use? The specs that Jacobs provided, so then we have kind of standard. I know this just wasn't on that.
Got it, okay, so they, so it's not like that some list that state has. Got it, okay.
Uh item one point oh five is just on the treatment building, there's an exterior concrete stain for all the exposed concrete above grade. And this is one of those other items that keeps coming and going um through the items. Um if we decide to take the concrete stain away, that's a twenty three thousand dollar saving, that's simply as an aesthetic value with that stain.
We think we're okay with great.
What about a sealer, you need to see the on the paint?
Oh, you're good, it's gonna hold.
Yep, we're good.
We get some of our local youth to come, hit a mural for us. They want some decoration. Have a contest.
So contest, there you go.
Awesome.
And school could have their own wall, there you go.
Uh one point oh six is also to be decided um. On the concrete, there's on all the walls, we're sticking them out about two feet for a future expansion and putting forms savers in those walls. So in lieu of doing that. To the extent that we can delete that for future expansion, there'd be considerable savings there, instead of just running a form, it's a flat wall face form. We have to add additional forms and bulkheads to put those extensions on for a future development of the plant later on down the road. Um what we've also found is putting those form savers in, um a lot of times in twenty years, when you go to connect to them. Uh they're either corroded, they're full of dirt, they're rusted, there's, it seems like a lot of times there's a problem with them. So just making sure that um that could be a considerable savings from our concrete guys to be able to to delete that extra work.
Okay. So they make hammer drills in the box.
Exactly.
Another change between sixty and ninety were overflow pipes, there's two twenty four inch overflow pipes on the treatment building. On the filters um that actually come out of the side of the building and drop down to to the ground. Simply a safety measure in case the plant ever gets too much water and you're you're filling it up too much, you don't fill up the structure, they're gonna overflow and kick in. Um and then there's one on the the sedimentation side of the plant too. Um there's roughly a hundred thousand dollars worth of material there. Um so if there's a way to, uh once we, again, we need Jacob's input on this, but just put a valve or something right off the face of the building. These should be very rarely, if, they should never be used, this is an emergency situation, so if we can figure out a way to save that a hundred thousand dollars, banging pipes off the side of the building. We would prefer to do that. For that, that's a sizable amount, so.
Have we ever had an overflow event at the water treatment plant that anyone's aware of?
Yes, yes.
That's why we're building a new plant.
Yeah, well, the the old folks situation and Preston's right, it's in an extreme emergency, the situation that we overflowed it is. The control narrative told the pump or or raw pump to speed up when it should have shut off and all, everything else was closed. So basically, I was just filling up all my basins and that's what caused the overflow event. Um that's almost the same principle with these filter um F is. An extreme emergency, something catastrophically goes wrong. We can evacuate the water from from the plant.
So would you feel comfortable, you were wanting this, dealing with that, if we just were able to put on some valve or something with that fit what was needed, or do we really need to have that pipe?
Yeah, I think.
Make a difference.
The piping, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now the piping comes out and it goes and it it dead. It's about three feet off of the the outside of concrete. So that would just completely get alleviated and it'd just be a valve just up on top, just in case something should happen.
She's still have an overflow, but it would prevent erosion.
Correct, yes.
Hundred thousand dollar erosion protection.
So just hide the rabbit.
So I'm gonna interject right here, these are all fairly new additions to the list. And these are all examples of why the C M O process works and why we selected this process. If we didn't have HP on board, uh we might not have found the things we items, so they're they're relatively new. And there's still some analysis to do on all these, so it's hard for us to say yes or no.
Sure. And we are beginning that process tomorrow, at Jacobs tomorrow afternoon, so.
And then you're also upgrading all the skater, the mainframe and all that, and hopefully that, again, where you said they got kind of crossed, it signaled that cross. You know, if you, I'll say if your instrumentation goes bad or your skate it goes wacky, then there's not really, you're gonna have to manually. That's not something.
Yeah, no, the the skater that we brought to the board to purchase both for the water and the wastewater plant is scalable to this new project, so yes, it does bring all that new technology in there to where. You don't have to worry about a a communication failure as much, because we were, we're not working on all the technology.
Good, thank you.
And one point oh eight, um HVAC ductwork material change. Um this has been floated back and forth too throughout the design, but we have some very, very hefty, expensive ductwork in there, stainless steel ductwork, three sixteen stainless.
Well, it's galvanized, galvanized aluminum and three sixteen.
In aluminum, so the aluminum and the stainless steel are are very high dollar ductworks, so. If they're all alternatives, I mean, we got air changes in all the buildings, do we really need that?
Get some galvanized going?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. That's why that one's on there, it's also a T V D, because I mean, the whole team needs to discuss that a little more before we can put pricing together. Uh one point oh nine, the submersible pump substitution to Sulzer, um very similar to what the finished water pump situation was like. If we can utilize a Sulzer pump, this one is not an NSF approved pump. Um so that will be something that DJ will need to look into, but it's not in touch with drinking water, so that NSF certification, we don't believe we need. Once again, that's a fifteen thousand dollar D duck just by changing the the pump manufacturer. Currently, right now, the exterior of the treatment building that's gonna receive the stain has a grout rub finish on it. Which includes going in with a foam trowel and more or less putting a skim coat on the whole wall of the treatment building. Um if we're able to delete the the stain, then we can delete that that prep for the stain. Which includes just going in and grinding all of the form seams. Um and then filling any voids that are one inch diameter or larger. Um which is very rare to have with the concrete we're able to use these days, but if there's a something like that, do a grout patch over that. Um if we're able to do that, once again, it's a forty thousand dollar savings to to delete that that finish.
And that's again, just more aesthetics, it's just aesthetics.
Um one point eleven, delete expansion fittings on poly tanks on vent overflow and fill, not required for the tank suppliers, so per the drawings and specs currently. They have expansion fittings on the outlets of the tanks for the ones that I mentioned that. Um tank supplier is not required, we've never rigid rigid connection to those different. Connections that I'm talking about there, so those those eight inch fittings, expansion fittings, let's just allow the pipe to move different than the tank. Um allow for a twenty three thousand dollar savings if we're able to delete those out of the project. And then the final one that we came up with, the air scour blower pipe is currently called to be a three sixteen stainless steel, much like the ozone contact pipe. Um oftentimes, we see that pipe running in online carbon steel. Or even a three oh four stainless, there shouldn't be moisture in it and it's gonna run very sparingly. Um so going with a a lot cheaper alternative, but still have the same longevity is what we'd like to see, so once again, depending on what the option, the team's okay with, that's a TBD. But a fairly sizable option there to to use a substitution on material.
There's some hidden stuff here, huh, maybe, huh, sounds pretty good.
We feel very comfortable.
TBDs, you know, to be determined, it sounds like some pretty big items that are kind of no brainers here. Yeah, we're gonna be able to see that before the meeting, or at the meeting.
We're gonna talk about it like Preston said.
Too much as you can.
We need to get Jacobs.
Should be nice to have some of that, I'm know.
A lot of these, we have a pretty good idea where they're gonna fall, but before we put a number out here, we need to make sure that we're. Uh we're all in agreement with Jacobs and the town, so. And like Bob said earlier, this list, HP doesn't feel that this is the one time to do V E through the next two years.
Yeah.
When we get more into it, there's gonna be items that keep populating this, and hey, guys, we all need to go back and look at this, and. That'll be the whole team, once we get more familiar with everything, we'll be able to find some more options.
Great.
I'd say I'm really pleased with both this report, although again, some of the numbers are eye opening, but this is the world we live in, but. I really appreciate the the, you know, everything, everything I've had. Questions, perhaps, and some of them will be found, you'll work through this, I'm confident you will, so. I think it's just great, especially going through all this stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Got anything?
Um I did just have a question on, I knew the thirty two million dollar number does not include the one point six, Dave. Um but when we're talking about the three point seven increase, does that, is that a three point seven increase from the sixty percent including? Okay, so it's a three point seven increase from the three. From what we had at sixty percent, which included that one point six ozone. Two thirty two million that did not include ozone, so realistically, that's really more like a five point two.
We we accounted for the ozone, so uh we took the sixty percent estimate, took the one and a half million dollar, one point six million out of it.
Oh, okay.
And that's where we got the three point seven difference, so.
Okay, got it.
It was accounted.
Okay, got it, that's what I, okay, I wanted to clarify, so even though the ozone wasn't included in sixty percent, when you guys did the three point seven difference, that subtracts out the one point five for the for the, okay, so.
Kind of backed into it.
Okay, I've got it, but I just wanted to make sure that. It was truly three point seven. I think we hit all the questions that I had for Bob, I don't remember if there's anything else I asked you, I may already ask about the price list, we talked about V E. Um we talked about the design changes. Oh, and I don't know if you have this now, those everything, the Davis Bacon and American Iron Steel, and I know I talked about it, so I'm not expecting those numbers, but if we could. When this comes back to us, and you guys have said that a big change from sixty to ninety was because of those, could you reflect what that was, what would those numbers have been at sixty percent, what did they become at ninety percent, what was that change? Um they're just reflecting that, that hey, here's what changed in those numbers, here's what it costs us in addition, and that's where we're gonna change. Just because that that is called out in the description, like this is one of the big major causes of cost increases, if we could just be able to speak towards that, so we can see what that was.
So question for you, and you're, I don't know if it'd be founder exhibit C, uh the. Eight uh H P's. Hit list Colorado wage decision C of twenty twenty two zero 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 two. Let's look that up, I mean, this is generally. I did go look and I found like most government websites, it was clear as mud.
Generally, the the current wage decision is gonna be easiest to find, to find those historical ones, it's that. Probably on purpose, you know. People grabbing the wrong ones.
What are you looking for, ballpark kind of thing?
Well, just if we're calling out that a big part of the price increase was because of Davis and Bacon and American Iron Steel, I want to be able to actually point and say, this is what changed in that, so. Before we were estimating, you know, Davis and Bacon was going to cost us an additional, you know, one point five million on top of normal wages, and now it's going to cost us two point three.
Yeah, um, we also did that with the wastewater plant, uh, we we had the American Iron Steel and Davis Bacon impacts to the prices between sixty and ninety. And we're prepared to submit that when we.
Okay, and maybe I missed it in the packet for wastewater, you had the total number.
Yes.
That you showed us for the whole projects.
Yes.
But what I'm looking for is what, what changed from sixty to ninety?
Hmm.
And so that's what I'm looking for is, so if it was, because I think it was one point six or something.
It was one point.
One point six, but that was total, and it's sort of like, okay, at sixty percent, we were at one point three, and then now at ninety percent, we're at one point six, that's what I'm looking for. And so.
So not just the changes, but what, where we were at at sixty percent.
Right.
Wages and where we're at for ninety percent for D V wages.
Exactly, yeah.
So we have that question about halfway answered.
Okay.
Yeah, another few days.
That's fine.
We can send that answer out to.
I think it's just good to include, because when we call out, this was one of the major things, I think it's great to be able to show, this is, you know, here.
But I'm not interested in going by trade. Nathan's done some research, um, these guys got this request to talk yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said it is what.
So we just need to get.
That's right.
Get ducks in a row.
Yeah, it just brings back a people, I think, the big. Like, the total last time was great, if we can just have the total, but also say, hey, here's where we're at at sixty percent, and now here's where we're at, and so we can see.
The incremental amount.
Yeah, sixty nine, you got it, yeah.
That's all I had.
All right. Good, good. All right, I think we're good, two years. Let's go.
So as as Dave said, we're, we're bringing this back on with Will for approval.
Yeah.
That's an important date for us, we heard all the reasons, but just a quick recap. Uh, if we have to, if we lose, if Preston loses some of his bids, he wasn't able to get, you know, um, a standard pole on those bids, right? There's some that have shorter durations, if we have to go and kind of rebid that. You know, who knows what's going to happen?
So my guess is it's going to go.
Package is done, you got the big package here.
But the hard thing about right now is a lot of the large packages, they're, they're selling us their material on the price that we order it. The day that we order it, just because there's so much volatility, so the sooner, the sooner we can get step orders, but. Now, the price we're going to get right now, a lot of the big equipment manufacturers, we're able to get sixty day hold on stuff because we're shooting for the April twelfth day. But a lot of the really, the rare commodities like the stainless and such, they're holding their price for the day you order it, so.
Market price, like lobster.
Yeah, that's lobster, that's right.
Well, I, I, there's one thing I wanted to say that, again, that. This has been, this whole process is about five years long, where we started with the water treatment master plan. And a couple of years down the road with another engineering firm. Pulled the plug as the prices increased, revalued everything and then started over, so. It's not like this came out of thin air, we've been chewing on this for a long time.
We've just been watching it go up.
So, yeah, this, this, this.
No, we need to, we need to. Go.
Do we have any incentives in place? I know with wastewater, we have incentives for coming in under budget, where some of the savings went back to the contractor. Uh, do we have someone incentives in place on this or?
This, this one's different, um, the savings that are generated from this project go back to the town.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.